Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. Today is Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. We are here in the Commissioners' Conference Room at the Laramie County Administrative Services. I am Laramie County Commissioner Jody Shaughnessy McNally. I'm Chair Pro Tem. I am covering for our Chair, Commissioner Stevens, who could not be here today. I know she will be listening in, but she won't be able to participate today. I'm joined at our table with my colleague, Commissioner John Kofalas. And we also have our County Manager joining us, Lorraine Volker. We have a lot of folks at the table. So Lori, I'm going to turn this over to you, but I'd love to go ahead and just do in deductions right off the bat. And I know we have our Assistant County Manager hiding, maybe? Nope, she's not here? Okay. So today, our work session, though, is regarding the Black Hollow debris flow recovery options. And Lori, before you started, well, do the introductions, and I'm hoping you'll probably explain what we talk about with Black Hollow. So thank you all for being here, and Lori, take it away. Thanks.
All right. Lori Hodges, I'm the Director of Emergency Management for the county. We have people here from engineering, building, planning, and emergency management. So I'll have Cole introduce yourself.
All right. I'm Cole Parrott with the Laramie County Office of Emergency Management, the Deputy Emergency Manager.
Josh Roberts, Mitigation Coordinator with the Office of Emergency Management here at Laramie County.
Hi, Mark Peterson, County Engineer.
Tracy Shambow.
Tracy Shambow, Laramie County Engineering.
Aaron Worster, Laramie County Engineering.
Eric Freed, County Building Official.
And we also have Bill Rusu here, County Attorney, that I asked him to attend as well.
Thanks for being here, Bill. Okay, we have Cassie, too, from our community development.
Yeah, and Amy.
Amy White from Code Compliance Supervisor.
That's why you sit at the table.
I know. Can't hide in the corners back there. We see you. Okay, thank you, Lori. Let's go ahead and proceed.
All right. So it's been a while since we've updated the board on any actions that we've been taking with regard to the recovery of the Black Hollow area after its debris flow. So as you guys know, in 2021, the year following the Cameron Peak Fire, we had a catastrophic debris flow in the Black Hollow drainage in the Pooter Canyon that resulted in four fatalities and the destruction of multiple residences and outbuildings. Following that debris flow, the Colorado Geological Survey released a report regarding the Black Hollow drainage. And in that report, they really outlined that there's still significant danger in that drainage of another debris flow happening in the future. And within that report, this is all written in the overview section that I just gave you here, just so you guys have it for your records as well. They did put, the quote that they had was, "The Black Hollow drainage and adjacent side slopes still contain a significant amount of sediment and boulders. It's a question of when, not if, additional debris flows or mud flows will occur. It's not safe for remaining Black Hollow residents to stay in their homes, especially overnight." So for that reason, we sought out multiple different ways in which we might be able to assist in that area to try to decrease the life safety risk.
Lori, may I have you pause there just for a moment? Can you add a little detail to this? This is not just, you know, post-fire flooding is a danger, but this one's significant. And also, it's for a long period of time, they believe. It won't, it will be decades, correct, that this danger or this risk will be? Or did they, I thought they had given a little bit of a range that this is going to be for?
He may have given a timeline. I'm going to have Mark kind of talk about what he knows about the risk in that drainage.
So when we look at any tributary to the Pooter River, most of them are fairly steep slope. They come down, and at their confluence with the river system, you've got alluvial fan potential. So what's happening is sediment coming down out of those systems, whether we're classifying it as a debris flow or a flood flow that's carrying and moving bed material load. As it reaches the mouth of those canyons and the confluence with the Pooter, its material's going to tend to deposit out. On top of that, we have a watershed that's been significantly disturbed. We've had a lot of erosion occur down that valley, and so there's a lot of material that remains to be mobilized or remobilized. So the danger persists for a period of time. After a wildfire, you know, you're typically talking 10 years. But again, given the disturbance of that watershed and that drainage way, and the location of those properties at the mouth of an alluvial fan, you know, history has shown throughout the U.S., where developments have occurred on alluvial fans, there's been nothing but problems as the main channel moves from side to side. I mean, we had the case in the Black Hollow event where the confluence of the channel moved to the upstream side of the bridge, and we had material coming out and blocking major portion of the river and shifting it over. They've relocated the Black Hollow Channel back to where it was pre-flood event, but there's still the potential for it to move over time in response to major events.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And thanks, Lori, for letting me pause on that. I know you, well, you have, and I try to also. Once the fire is out, there's still this post-fire flooding that's a really significant risk and danger.
Right.
So thank you for letting me pause and kind of expand on that, because I do think it's, it's not just the fires out, everything's okay. There's lots to go with. So thank you for letting me pause for that.
Oh, no worries. So with the debris flow, you know, typically after an event, we see if we can qualify for any state or federal assistance. For this event, it was small enough where we didn't qualify really for a FEMA disaster declaration in any way. At first, we thought with the number of storms we were having in that area, that we might be able to combine storms and have enough damages within those, because we had some damages along Sheep Creek, the Buckhorn at the same time, the Retreat. But even with all of that, we weren't able to qualify for any kind of federal assistance. So at that point, there were really two options available to us. One was with any disaster declaration, like the Cameron Peak Fire, we qualify for additional funding through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program through FEMA. They have a property buyout program through FEMA. So that was kind of our first step. We have the funding. We have a program that's available to us. We talked to the property owners. There were people who were interested after seeing this geological survey report in the property buyout program. We came to the board about that as well because of the life safety risk. So we went forward with an application for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program through FEMA. But the state didn't prioritize our project high enough for FEMA to ultimately award us that money. So that was kind of exhausted at that point. And right about when we were getting the notice that that program wasn't going to work, NRCS reached out to us, because they were already working in the Black Hollow area. They did some, we've done three phases of work, I guess I'd say. We did the initial phase, which was trying to move those homes and all that debris out of the river system, and then also getting all those rocks and boulders and all the stuff that came down from that drainage out of that area so that we could kind of see what's going on there. And then now they're still doing some work on kind of that restoration, kind of more of the long-term work. But they had a new program through NRCS, which was a buyout program. So they reached out to us, and they said, hey, we think that this program would be good for the Black Hollow area. It might make more sense instead of the other project that we were thinking about doing. So we had some community meetings. We did meet with you guys, the board, and you guys said, yeah, go forth, since the FEMA thing didn't work out. So we did the application process through NRCS as well. And we just learned recently that they've decided to go with the other project in the Black Hollow area. So they're still going to be doing a project. They're partway through that project right now, but they decided not to fund the property buyout project at this time. So that kind of leaves us out of options for state or federal funding of any kind. Okay? So with that in mind, any questions before I go any further on just kind of the history of where we're at?
Commissioner Kofalas, do you have a question?
On behalf of the people that are listening, you used an acronym. Please tell us what that means.
NRCS is the Natural Resources Conservation Service, and it's the Emergency Watershed Protection Program through them. Thank you for that. All right. So the final NRCS project that's currently underway, they told me that it's, you know, kind of at that 40% to 60% design right now. It's to move more of those rocks and debris, to realign that river, like Mark just mentioned. But they're still working on the permitting, because the Pooter River is a wild and scenic river, so there's some additional hurdles that they have to go through there. This project is also a City of Greeley NRCS project instead of a Laramie County project, because we divided the fire early on into two sections. So they're moving forward with that. So now I want to kind of give you some information about, you know, what's next? What can we do?
Lori, I'm sorry to pause you again, but for those who are listening in or maybe ask why the City of Greeley, they're in Weld County, not Laramie County, can you just kind of add that little bit of information?
Yeah, so immediately following the flood, Greeley had major impacts to their water systems from the Cameron Peak Fire, or they were concerned about major impacts to their water system. So the Pooter River is obviously very important to them. So they started talking to the Natural Resources Conservation Service about being a project sponsor. Well, we were talking to them at the same time about being a project sponsor, because we have the entire fire area, including the Pooter Canyon. So early on, we decided to divide up, to have two project sponsors, and have Greeley really focus in on the Pooter River up the Pooter Canyon. And then the county was going to focus on everything from Rustic East, as well as everything south of there for the fire. So that's how we just divided up the projects that we were working on. That's why Greeley was working on that Phase 3. We did the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 for the NRCS projects for Black Hollow. We worked on those, and the Phase 3, or maybe Phase 2, was partly Greeley. I don't know. But Phase 3 is a Greeley project.
Thank you, because this is a major water source for the City of Greeley, and they own a lot of water rights in that county.
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
No worries. So when we were doing this, there were seven properties that opted into the buyout program. So again, this wasn't like we were going to take people's property. We asked people if they were interested. There were seven property owners that were interested, and that's on page two of this handout, showing you what those properties are. So the, really, the only options that are before us now, we, I think we've exhausted, again, everything that's state or federal funding. The only options to us are if we can use county funding to do anything in that area. So I'm just going to talk about what that would mean, some of the costs. And then engineering is here, and building is here to talk about floodplain, as well as any other considerations with regard to land use or building codes. And then you guys can ask us any questions that you have. So the, there are three different scenarios that I kind of give here. One is that the county could buy out properties that had structures destroyed in the Black Hollow drainage, right? So the structure's now destroyed. It doesn't exist now. There might be some rebuilding considerations. So the county could decide, hey, we're going to go forward with that. Another thing is, kind of more of a micro level, is just buying out those properties that had structures destroyed that are in the floodplain that cannot rebuild. So they're vacant land at this point. And then, or you could decide, hey, you want to buy out all properties with the risk of future debris flows, regardless of damages. Or we go forward with, NRCS is doing the final project. That's the last thing that's going to go on in the area. So it's a kind of more of that scenario where we're not going to do the buyout process. So on page two, the bottom of page two, out of the seven properties in the NRCS application, five of them had structure damages related to the debris flow. So I outline what those five properties are and what that damage looked like, just for your records there. And then at the top of page three, I provide you with the pre- and post-flood values and the benefit cost analysis of each of those five properties that we came up with when we were working with FEMA. FEMA has to have a score, a benefit cost analysis score, for any project that we're looking at doing. So really, anything above a one shows that there is a good benefit cost analysis, and you can see that it goes all the way up to the 9.18 for one of these properties, which is a very high benefit cost analysis. So one of the considerations that we had before the Commissioners in the past also was, do we do pre-flood? Do we do post-flood values? Those values are very different, depending on what happened in that debris flow. So this kind of shows you, I think the post-flood values would probably, these are obviously estimates, but the post-flood values would obviously change, because this was a year and a half that we've been through this application process, so it's changed a little bit. So that just gives you some information about kind of where we're at and what that might cost the county. Josh had talked to me about what's all included in this value, and I forgot to put that in this worksheet. So do you want to talk through kind of all the different things that are included in that value?
Yep, certainly. Josh Roberts, again, Mitigation Coordinator, OEM. So it includes a, an assessed value of the property itself, also an environmental and historical program preservation review, some of the costs associated with that, costs to appraise the property, closing costs, demolition costs, if we need to cap wells or things like that, erosion or stability cost. When I say cap and wells, removing some utilities, like it factors in all of those costs. And each one of those items I just described, the dollar amounts are on a per property, and they're just estimated using pretty standard, you know, typical costs associated with those.
Lori, did any of the phases of work that were done mitigate any of the risk for these properties that are on this list that were not damaged? So can you speak to some of the stabilization work that was done earlier?
Yeah, I think I'm going to pass that to Mark again.
What I don't, unfortunately, I don't think we have all the details in terms of what's been done in terms of mitigating risk. Many of the properties, and we can get into more of a discussion about potential floodplain impacts, many of the properties are currently located in a FEMA Zone A floodplain for the Pooter River, and they're also within 100-foot setback requirement of a stream channel as defined on a USGS line that would apply to the Black Hollow properties that are proximate to Black Hollow.
So that's kind of next, I think, is, I was going to say that I don't, I don't have enough information about whether, you know, the, like a chart for if we can't rebuild in an area. So I do want to pass this off now to engineering. They have a map and additional memo for you guys for consideration with regard to the floodplain specifically.
And I'll go ahead and, again, reintroduce Aaron Worster. He's a new employee with Laramie County, came to us from the Forest Service. He's becoming our floodplain manager, as well as involved in development and stormwater projects. But he's the one who pulled the memo together, so I'll let him, he and Tracy, kind of go through from a regulatory standpoint, where does, where do these properties stand?
Sure. So the two factors that the county has to impose additional requirements upon rebuilding for these properties would be the Zone A floodplain and also a setback requirement for, that they would need to get a variance for, obviously, because they're parcels and their existing historic structural footprint was in that setback. And so in order, there's some additional hoops that they would need to pass through in order to rebuild. They would need to model that floodplain more specifically. If you guys are not aware, a Zone A means that we're aware of a floodplain, but we don't have very specific hydraulic modeling on that floodplain done, meaning we don't have a base flood elevation and we don't have precise mapping. So if you examine this exhibit closely, you can kind of see some issues with where the floodplain is on the map, and that's because it is a Zone A. It is not perfectly accurate. So if any, if any property owner or developer would like to develop those properties, they would need to pay a professional engineer to go and perform those calculations and to take a Zone A and make it a more established Zone AE regulatory floodway or flood fringe, along with base flood elevations. And so those requirements are obviously, can become quite costly for just a single property owner to do.
And until that analysis, excuse me, until that analysis was completed, there really isn't a way to determine whether or not it's a buildable or rebuildable lot.
Commissioner Kofalas, I see that you might have a question.
Well, yes, thank you, and thank you all. What kind of communication has been occurring with the property owners, perhaps more recently? It sounds like they're interested in rebuilding, and they're also interested in selling and being done with the risk.
I believe all of the above. So, you know, one property already has been sold, and a new cabin exists on that land. Another property, the two properties that didn't have damages on page three, they're looking to sell, I think, their property. And their, the NRCS project that's currently underway is to try to help get them access back to that property, because they lost their access when the river shifted, or when the Black Hollow stream shifted. And then there's others that want to stay in the area. You know, there's a long-term resident there who doesn't have any plans on moving. And then there's others who would definitely like to sell, because they lost everything. So I think we have, like, the whole, the whole gambit.
Thank you.
No worries.
I have a question, then. You said someone's already bought and sold and built a cabin. Is it in the flood?
It is, I don't know. I just got this information about the floodplain today, so I can't answer that question here. I don't know if you guys can answer that question. But the one that was sold, where's the cabin? What's the address?
Yeah, Toby Rose, looking at it. I think it might be that one right there.
What's the address? Did it say?
Seventy Black Hollow.
Seventy Black Hollow. Okay. Yeah, they were in the buyout program, but if you, oh, I didn't bring it. I had another graph that had all of the properties in the Black Hollow area. So I can get you that information, but I don't have it here with me.
Okay. Thank you.
So how could they sell and rebuild? They must have gone through the building permit process, or I thought we had all these, we had to determine if they were in the floodplain Zone A, and that would require certain additional information.
I think Amy White's looking it up right now, because I was not aware that a cabin had been rebuilt. But the way.
I'll show you guys on the map, because then you guys can answer this question.
I don't mean to.
It's this one right here.
Just.
No, I'd like, I'd like to see.
I'm just curious if it's, if I, we understood correctly, so one cabin was sold, or the property was sold, and then they've actually built a new cabin, and did they follow all the?
I have no idea.
Apparently did not get a building permit, because there is no building permit for a new cabin. The last permit we have there was a miscellaneous permit for an electrical upgrade.
I was always there.
Which indicated that was not, that it was still there. Problem with miscellaneous permits is they don't get any kind of planning or plan review.
And are they in the floodplain Zone A or outside of it, or what? Are we still trying to figure that out?
Yeah, I mean, they.
Good discussion.
They would have needed a floodplain permit if they were in that Zone A and we were aware of it.
Can you turn on your mic?
Sorry, they would have needed a, some sort of floodplain permit if they were in a Zone A and we were aware of what was going on.
But if they didn't secure a building permit, then it doesn't appear that they would have secured a proper floodplain permit.
So in brief, the way this is supposed to work is if they come in for a building permit, when one of our permit texts initiates the permit, a notice pops up that it's in the floodplain. And then we call over our floodplain managers, and they walk them through the process. They might, they would first need to get floodplain approval, which might mean require getting some kind of variance through the floodplain review board, which is theoretically possible, but in this case, probably unlikely. And then if they're also planning always to reuse new structures for setbacks, so if they were within the required setback to the river, it would also require a setback variance through the Board of Adjustment. So it may be, and like I said, this is news to me, which Code Compliance and us will have to pursue, maybe they were told what the requirements are, and they thought, well, this is just too difficult, that I'm going to rebuild a cabin and not tell anybody.
I have a correction. So this, this property wasn't destroyed. It was damaged in the flood, and so they did renovations to it. So it's a renovated new cabin. But they did sell the land to another person who did those renovations. So that might have changed why they needed whatever codes they might have needed.
So depending on what they did, they might have still needed a building permit. If you're just replacing fixtures, cabinets, drywall, carpet, finished materials, we don't typically require a building permit. They did get the electrical upgrade permit, so.
Okay. So sorry. Caused a little bit of confusion.
No, I think it's important, because it's tricky. I'm just always curious if folks did their homework on things. I'll just stop there. Okay. Go ahead, Lori. Proceed. Thank you.
Any other questions before we go forward? Okay. This is why I bring people.
Let me pause and ask this question, and maybe this is, I'm not sure who to direct this to. In the system, some of these properties, I mean, you just mentioned about there's a new floodplain that's still, it's a Zone A, so it has not, still, as I'm understanding, correct me if my understanding of this is wrong, it's still being determined, the Zone A, and I'm trying to figure out what's in the system to put on a flashing yellow or orange or red light, that this is a property that needs the extra due diligence or setbacks and things, just for future? And is that required on MLS things and, you know, just kind of that general guidance? And I'm just curious, you know, about that.
So the main issue for us is, is it in a designated floodplain of some kind? And that would be, as Eric had described, that would be triggered by, you know, a referral from building, if somebody was doing something that required any kind of building permit. If it was a damaged structure, then it would go into what level of damage it had incurred as to whether or not it triggered requirements to comply with repairs or improvements to a damaged structure. So there's a level of improvement or investment that they can put into that property to still comply with FEMA regulations. If they want to do something significantly different from what's there, if they had been substantially damaged, or if they were out to build an entirely new structure, that would potentially trigger requirements for them to go in and do a detailed study of the floodplain, so we knew. the floodplain so we knew what the base flood elevations were, and so we could make sure that anything that was proposed to be done met FEMA requirements for elevation of the structure, protection of the structure. But we're pretty much constrained by what we have to work with from FEMA regulations or perhaps a setback variance.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Lori.
And Commissioner Kofalas, you talked about communications. So we have tried to be really proactive in communicating with the community since the very beginning. So when we got the Colorado Geological Survey report, we sent that to every community member in that Black Hollow area. We provided them kind of that, that emergency warning of saying, you're at risk if you stay in this area. And then since then, each program that we've gone after, we've notified the residents, we've talked to them about what we want to do, we have notified them that the NRCS project is not going to move forward. So that's the last communication we had. That was probably about a week or two ago before I set up this work session to just let you guys know kind of where we're at. So they are fully in the loop. I do know that some do want to rebuild, so they have some questions about, you know, floodplain and what can they do to rebuild. So I've referred them to, you know, one person, Eric, and then we've been talking about floodplain stuff with engineering as well. So it's just on a piece-by-piece basis, yeah. The only other thing that I have really here is if you wanted to add in the two properties that wanted to opt into the buyout program, I added those at the bottom of page three here. They didn't have BCA scores because they weren't originally in the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, but then they opted into the NRCS program. So I just have those values there. Again, those values are estimates. They could change because this is dated a little bit, but that shows you how much additional funding would be needed if we ended up doing a buyout for those properties. And then I put down at the bottom just a few additional considerations for the board in making any decision. One is that the board was pretty clear, you know, when we started this, that there was no real benefit to the county to own this land long-term, because then we maintain it and, and it's just this pocket in the middle of the forest. So we worked a lot with the US Forest Service to see if we could donate the land to them once we purchased it through these grants. The Forest Service was willing to do that. They had some conditions, obviously. Obviously, they didn't want to just get one property in the middle of everything and then be surrounded by private land. It needed to be contiguous to the forest. But I think that they're still willing to do that. So obviously, if we did move forward in any kind of buyout, we'd need to make sure that that is still something that they're willing to do. So that's something to consider as well. Another consideration is the properties would have to leave the road association. So our county attorney's office worked with the landowners in that area early on when we were looking at the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program as well as NRCS, because the county nor the federal government can take on annual dues. So they would have to leave that road association. There was a provision that allowed that, but there's some work that would need to be done to make sure that that happened before anything could occur there. I don't know if I said anything wrong, Bill, there? Okay. And then a determination would also need to be made regarding buying out properties at pre-flood versus post-flood values, so, because those are different values. And if the board did want to move forward in any way, we could do the work to try to get the, the post-flood values up to date on, on what they are today. The pre-flood shouldn't change in any way. Did you have something you were going to say about that? Okay. So those are kind of all the considerations that we have for you. We gave you a couple of different maps, as well as I gave you the first 15 or so pages of the Benefit Cost Analysis Technical Report, just to give you a little bit of detail about how they came up with the properties and the risk in the area for your records. But any other questions really for us at this point?
Commissioner Kofalas, any questions?
I need a moment to process. So when, when Lori talked about this, she brought it to the Strategic Leadership Committee just for feedback and are we offering the right kind of options. I, I do want to say we don't have any money set aside for this. So we had hoped that there would be federal funding that would come in. We could play the go-between role. We might help negotiate some of these. This would need to come from your general fund reserves, so we do not have anything special set aside here.
Correct. Yeah, in our Cameron Peak fire budget, that's where the Black Hollow work was. All of that money is allocated currently for work that's already been done. Yeah.
And as I look at the math, it looks like if, if the total cost for all of these properties is 1.239, so we're 1 and 1/4 million to, to make these purchases roughly. Is that right?
Or 1.7, depending on if it's pre-flood or post-flood.
Right, exactly. Right. This would be post-flood value.
Yeah.
I'm also, I'll raise a question of precedent setting. I know, I believe the county did make some purchases after the, the major flood in the 70s. That's been a very long time. We've not done it since then.
We did it in the 2013 flood.
We did, okay.
Yeah.
We don't have any partners here, and we are in a different position, so I don't mean to be the wet blanket on the discussion, but this is important to the, to this, these homeowners. It's also important to the county. Can we do this again? What will be the expectation? And where do we get the money? So.
Thank you, Loretta. If I might, Commissioner Kofalas, we just, you know, before this work session, for those listening in, we just talked about a structural deficit, and I don't think our budget team is here. We should have them stick around, but we, we're looking at a structural deficit from actions from the state legislature a year ago or so that capped our revenue. So we, we are now looking at, you know, expenses and costs far exceeding what our revenue's allowed, and we really have been so conservative and fiscally, I think, good stewards that we have really limited our, our growth to, like, I think you said, one, less than 1%. And so over the last few years that we have, you know, we've kept our, up to E, pretty stable, but, you know, the needs and, and the, and the costs in the community have risen. So it's one of those hard things that we've had to encounter where we really would like to, you know, be of service, but we were looking for these partners, but it's, I'm disappointed to hear about some of those changes. But, so I have a question, but I'm going to, I just wanted to make that comment about the, the structural deficit we're facing over the next one to two years. I think it's six to eight million we're looking at in the next two years to account for. So I have one question or comment, but I'm going to go ahead and let Commissioner Kofalas ask what questions or comments he would like to make.
Thank you, Madam Chair Protam. I believe I've accumulated three questions. The first one is, well, based on the regular communication that you just shared, and I'm grateful that you've been proactive about that, what, so people are aware of changing circumstances, but what are their current expectations of what the county may or may not do?
In, in my email that I sent out a week or so ago, really, all that I said in that is that we have exhausted all state and federal program availability to help fund a buyout program. I did not in, in any way present anything about what the county may or may not be able to do at this point, because I wanted to meet with the board first. So I don't know that there's an expectation that the county is going to do anything further. I, I definitely haven't set up people for them to think that anything's going to happen further, but we wanted to make sure that we gave you all the information you need to, to make any kind of informed decision that you need at this point.
May I do my other two questions? Thank you. My second question is regarding the partnerships that we were trying to have here, and they have not worked out. Is there any possibility that two years from now, three years from now, those partnerships could occur that would allow for leveraging of resources and cost sharing and, and then ultimately, I mean, I think it would also be important, unless it's premature, to, to clarify with the US Forest Service. If they're not interested in this land, then, then that settles that perhaps. But you get my question there, Lori, about any potential for future partnerships, three, four, five years from now.
Yeah, so the US Forest Service, we reached out to them for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and then again for the NRCS program, just to ensure that they were still interested, and both times they were. So obviously, if the board decided to do anything, we would reach out to them again just to confirm that. But we have it in writing that they would be interested, but obviously, there's conditions with it, along with the Wild and Scenic River. So that's one part of it. The other piece is if we had another major disaster declaration, more additional hazard mitigation funding could come our way. However, with the changes in FEMA right now and the change, the proposed changes in the disaster thresholds, the chances of us getting another declaration are very low, I think, right now. And we don't know what's going to happen in September when they're talking about abolishing FEMA or reorganizing FEMA, whatever that's going to look like, that's all still in the air. So we do have annual funding that comes to the state from FEMA in mitigation grants. So that's something that we can always look at, but that's highly competitive, and if we didn't compete before, I don't know that we would compete now. So I wouldn't want to put that out there as something that's a probability. I think that that's, that's more of a, like a last ditch, we'll try it and see what happens, but we've already tried that and we didn't, we weren't successful. So that's all that I know of right now as far as state or federal programs that might be able to assist in the area. I really do think that we've exhausted all avenues.
And my third question, final question, and meaning this in a sincere way, so if the county takes a no-action option, what are the implications for the folks who own property there, other than their, if they choose to follow the rules and get proper building permits and floodplain variances and setbacks, other than they put themselves at greater risk? But can you speak to that at all from a, yeah?
I think that's why we wanted to show you the floodplain considerations as well as the setback considerations, because if somebody lost everything in this flood, they may not be able to rebuild. So that's a consideration. I do know that a couple of these folks were primary residents. I think some of them were secondary homes. So again, it's complicated. There's no one answer. So if, if the county did move forward with, with a no-buyout program at this point, there would be people who may or may not be able to rebuild in that area, depending upon where they're at and, and further study, as Mark had mentioned. Did I say anything wrong there? Okay.
I'll stop there.
Commissioner?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Stevens did have a question. She's watching online, and she, she wanted to say that she's hesitant because of the cost, but she wonders, is this the best use of mitigation dollars going forward? So we have a limited bucket. Can you speak to that a little bit?
That's a hard one. I would say, and I'll let anybody else speak up as well, but I would say that the risk in this area is much higher, and we have data to show that the risk is much higher in this area outside of any other area where we have regular flood risk or regular fire risk that could occur if we have an event. This is an area that's been proven to be unstable, and because of all the stuff that Mark had talked about with erosion and everything else, the, the risk is just higher. So I don't know if that totally answers your question, but that's probably as far as I'm going to go. Mark, did you want to say anything more about that?
I mean, the only thing I would add is, again, we're looking at a floodplain that's only been defined for the Pooter River. There's no reflection of any kind of flood risk, floodplain for Black Hollow. So, you know, we're, we're operating with really limited information, aside from a historic event that's, you know, defined what could happen in the future.
And, and Mark and I talked about this a little bit as well. There are other places in the county that are built on these alluvial fans, right? And at the end of drainages, oh, sorry. There are other areas in the county that are built in kind of the same situation where they're at the bottom of a drainage or a part of an alluvial fan. So there's, there's risk in other areas. You know, obviously, there isn't a study on who has the most risk at this point, but risk does exist. And there are huge mitigation opportunities in the county that we can explore as well. So that is open to us because we have risk of both flood and fire yearly in the county.
So I recall in the Alexander Mountain Fire, I think there was a confluence there, and is there a similar situation that could result from that fire as well? Are we looking at more of these, I guess, is the precedent-setting question?
Do you want to talk about Cedar Cove?
Sure. Cedar Cove is at the bottom of that drainage wave for Cedar Creek. It experienced flooding in the 2013 event, and then it's been identified as an area of high concern for us, because again, it's at the mouth of the canyon for the creek in an area of probably sediment deposition that occurred as, you know, the, the channel start to widen out, everything drops out. And so we have been working with those property owners and the NRCS to look at, are there some flood barrier bags or muscle wall flood protection that could be put in on a temporary basis? The property owners basically have to agree to have that done, but that's in process. So it's an area of high concern. We had the same concerns about four cabins that sit at the bottom of Seven Mile Drainage Way after the Cameron Peak Fire. We thought they were very likely to be at elevated risk. They've made it so far, you know, without having flooding occur, but it's properties at the location of the confluence that, that got built adjacent to, you know, a scenic stream channel that are at high risk, regardless of whether there's been a fire in the basin.
And then we talked to, in the Cedar Cove area, I think, tell me if I'm wrong, but the, the speed would be less than what we saw with Black Hollow with how fast that went down. So that was another consideration, is, is, you know, is it going to be high-rising water or is it going to be, you know, a whole bunch of debris coming down like the retreat has had, you know, where those flood barrier bags have definitely been beneficial as well? So that's a consideration.
And, and the last point I make is that, you know, what we've seen throughout the flood events is really all it takes is a large log or some timber to jam up in someplace, and it redirects the stream channel into the overbank. That's why we lost miles of 44H during the 2013 flood event, why we repeatedly lost the road up in the Miller Fork streamside area after the 2013 flood event as well. You just have sedimentation occur or debris, and it moves the channel off and takes out your road or properties that are adjacent.
So any other information you guys need from us?
Yeah, I, I have some questions. I'm just waiting, and it's like, my colleagues have asked some of what I was going to ask, but I'm going to kind of maybe build on that. So having walked up, as you know, after Cameron Peak, I walked around the retreat a lot, like, sometimes every few days after they had all the, I mean, literally, the, the channel and the road washed out looked different every three days because of all the washout. And, and what is it, 2022 or 2023, they had, what, 22 flash floods through there, that area?
They had a couple of years, yeah.
Yeah, it was just really high post-fire flooding. So we know those areas are high-risk, and I know Cedar Cove has been a, a concern. I mean, especially since we drive down 34, I've seen when I've driven down the rain and the water running down, it's all turning black. It makes me kind of get jumpy, and so I have some videos if you'd like to see them. But I, I know we put some rain monitors up there and, and, but there's a lot of these areas where folks have built in years before any of this happened, have been up there for decades. And I think about these homes, and you're saying that these, the ones that have not been rebuilt through the correct processes would have a lot of challenges and would be something that would be, would, you would all have a chance to say, hey, that you can't do that because you're, of the setback and the rain. So I'm wondering about, do we have a catalog of where these high-risk areas and some of these homeowners and, and kind of an assessment of, of the risk areas of where these home, like, you, you, the barrier bags and the ones you talked about, it seems like you have an idea where these places are and where the risk is. And I know we did do a, I think there was a risk assessment when we first came on the board, that you, you had a risk assessment areas of what you, where you thought, who was the highest risk after the Cameron Peak Fire. Has that, I remember that very closely because I was keeping it all serious in my thoughts. Have we reassessed that? And is it, it costs money to do that? Or have, do you, has that changed? And who did that assessment? Did, I'm trying to remember all of that.
We have not redone that risk assessment since the fire. We're five years out now, so if we wanted to do a reassessment, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the changes would be. I don't know if you have any opinions on that. And then it would cost money. That's the second part of your question. So I don't know, with all the ash coming down off Cameron Peak, do you know if the risk would be different in any way?
It would probably involve additional hydrologic modeling, where you would make, or you would try to update assumptions for land cover and see, you know, if that gave you reduced runoff response. It would be a fairly costly endeavor.
Yeah.
Going back to your question about risk along the Pooter, if you'll recall, you did authorize and provide us some funding to look at risk along the Pooter River and get some detailed mapping in the Rustic area, because that was an area for, pretty much from where. where Kennedy Road 69, Manhattan Road comes down, in the upstream area, including kind of the profile rock and up to the lower end of this reach, we looked at more detailed information. But it didn't go up through the confluence here, and it didn't pick up
Okay.
This upstream area.
I remember that. Thanks for jogging my brain there. So I guess, back to the matter at hand, I'm just thinking that this is a conversation, a large conversation, but back to your point of precedent, and do we have the money? Certainly, I feel like with the structural deficit that we're facing and looking at some of the federal uncertainties, which are enormous in my opinion, and could be literally landscape changes to how we operate, which is frightening for me to think about. I just, I know when we had the partnerships and we had this kind of coming together, we thought in the right direction. This was really hopeful, but it seems like that has all kind of unwound itself. And so I really, every bit of, any bit of money is so important for us to have in case we have anything, which is not if, but when. But I do want to say, because Commissioner Kofalas kind of asked my question, was we have done so much outreach and continue, maybe I'm assuming you'll do continual outreach, but we know of this issue, that if those opportunities present themselves again and everything comes together, that it's something you could bring back to us if the programs like reappear or change so that in the future, there's opportunity that you would let us know. And because this, and again, I appreciate the Forest Service being willing to take it and donation, and we know we had conversations with the Rocky Mountain Conservancy. So I think I would like to see that this doesn't get kind of like, that it's still kind of there in case things come forward, not with any expectation that there's something going to happen, but just in case with, we never know when things come together. But I do feel like we have to really be prudent at this time. And I feel a little more heartened that we know this is going to be a challenge for people to rebuild. Not that I don't want them to because it's a beautiful area, but it is a high-risk area. So I think that's where I would be. I think there is some fun, something to say about the needs and where we're at. So I see, so I would be leaning towards, unfortunately, it kind of breaks my heart to say it, I just don't know if we have any money to do this. So Commissioner Kofalas?
Can I say something really quick to your comment? I think one thing that we can do pretty quickly is, we're just starting on the hazard mitigation grant, I mean, hazard mitigation planning process for our new plan. It's a five-year plan, and in that, we put actions in there so we can continue to put Black Hollow as one of the areas that we know is at risk, that is in action. And then that way, if funding does come around from any other program, we have a report that shows why that's important. So we can definitely keep that in that plan.
I think that's great. Thank you, Lori. Commissioner Kofalas?
Yeah, thank you. A final question and then my closing comment in terms of direction. And the question is this, well, first, it's a two-part question. Of the properties that are in this area that are at risk, what did you say? How many of them are primary residences?
That were in the buyout program? I know one of them was a primary residence, but I don't have the, I would have to call each one and find out.
So just one? Just one and the other ones are secondary?
I know that one that was, everything was destroyed, it was his primary residence. I do know that.
So where does that person live now?
I think in Loveland.
Okay, because I guess where I was going with that, and maybe you've already answered it, is if those whose properties are quote "primary residences," is there, are there other organizations who might help them with relocation or finding?
Yeah, not at this time, not this far out from the disaster.
Okay.
Yeah. They probably helped early on, but all of that.
Oh, really?
Yeah. With that debris flow, we have those nonprofits that assist people, the Red Cross assists when people lose their homes from fires. This would have been the same type of scenario since it didn't reach the level of a major disaster declaration.
Thank you. So my closing comments, I just, at this time, we are, the county is not financially able to participate in the buyout properties options, the three options that were presented. That's where it is. And I'm glad that the idea of including this area in the hazard mitigation discussions and also if future partnerships arise, then we need to revisit this. That is my opinion.
All right. And we'll definitely come back before the board if anything changes. Yeah.
And thanks for keeping that in the report, too. I think, I don't think the risk has diminished at all, but it's unfortunate. So, and then I wanted to make sure we give Lorraine a chance to run it, but go ahead.
Yeah, just a comment that might be helpful, too, and especially in light of very fair points about setting precedent, right? Mitigation loosely is defined as actions that are activities we can take to help prevent or reduce the impact of the disaster. In this case, disasters happen, right? And this is sort of a recovery thing for these people. But no matter who owns the property, the risk is still there, and not just in Black Hollow, but in Cedar Cove and in many other places around the county. And so one of the things that's been in my mind, on our mind, with respect to the hazard mitigation plan, is really maybe what we ought to be looking at is a more wholesale, managed retreat type of approach. You know, this case is important, as are others, and I think through the structure of the hazard mitigation planning process, we can start to dive into a little bit more deeply what kind of managed retreat program, what that would look like, that would be fair to all, that we can set up structures so it's not just necessarily set in precedent in an off-the-cuff kind of way.
Thank you, Josh. And again, thank you, Aaron, for the memo. It's, I really found this helpful. And thank you, Lori, and for providing the overview. I think it's really important that we talk about how we got there and kind of the historic and why this is so important. And thank you, Mark, for, you know, it's a very complex story, and all of you have lived through 2013 and the High Park Fire and the Cameron Peak and Alex, I mean, we have unfortunately experience with these things. But I think for the public, again, just emphasizing, post-fire flooding and even post-flooding consequences are ongoing and costly, and that's why we work so hard on mitigation, because we know every, especially for all for mitigation, every dollar is six to 13 in recovery suppression costs. This is what we're talking about. And the risk to human life and property is huge. Just to even still think about this river having such a massive channel change, I'm glad to hear about the mitigation and the sort of work there. Thank you for sharing that. And I just want to thank you all for the work that you did. You put a lot of work in here to try to bring these partnerships together and have these meetings. There was a lot of effort put into this in talking and communicating with the landowners, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. This was a lot of work that has been done over the last few years, trying to come to getting everyone to the table, and we got that close. And so I want to just commend you all for continuing to try to do that, and I look forward to the new report. And thank you all. I just appreciate each and every one of you in this room. Lorraine, do you want to add anything to close out?
Yeah, I think it might be confusing, why did we present this if we don't have any money? It's the obligation of this office to say, this is the problem we have in our community. This funding has now fallen apart. Is there something that we might be able to do differently? Might we be able to fund this work? And so this discussion is really important, that these folks are really important. Everyone who lives in one of these areas is important, and we don't want to ignore that. Funding is a reality. It is a real issue. And I think if we can get at this programmatically instead of one-off after each disaster, now folks know what to expect and how to apply and what that might look like from a county perspective. So I really appreciate the forward-thinking work and the fact that you came here knowing there might not be funding, but still wanting to present the issue. So thanks for that.
Thanks, Lauren. And yes, I agree with what you said 100%, and I am very intrigued with what you had to add there, Josh, so I look forward to learning more about that. Well, thank you all for being here today. It is 3:25, and we are now adjourned. Thank you.